So it's May 13, 2019. I'm going to order -- open the Board of Selectmen meeting at 6:31 PM. Lake Camp is taping. Is anybody else taping the meeting? No. Okay. So the first item on our agenda is to meet with town council to discuss the policy for a moratorium on host community agreements. So we have our town council, Amy Quessell, who is present for our discussion. She has drafted a policy for our consideration which would discuss the ability to put a hold, a temporary pause if you will, on the signing of host community agreements while the board is able to consider the ramifications of the existing host community agreements, of which none of which are currently operational within the town of Lakeville. So we have a draft policy in front of us which would really kind of detail the fact that there are six facilities that are in various stages of permitting, both medical and industrial -- medical and adult use. And that the policy would state that the legalization of medical and adult-use marijuana is relatively new, and the impacts to the municipalities is unknown. The six facilities are not yet operational, so the board can't determine what the impacts would be on the town of Lakeville. That we would be also potentially considering zoning amendments. The planning board may be doing so as well, related to maybe limiting the number of licenses and/or a designated overlay zone. So although that's not exactly what the policy says, but we can discuss all that too. And therefore, it would be the board issuing a temporary freeze on signing any new host community agreements for six months from the date of the policy to address the above concerns. So I think I just summarized the entirety of the policy.
You did. Absolutely.
And that's what we have in front of us tonight to discuss. So I'm happy to either open it up to you, Amy, to discuss further, or if the board wants to discuss, I'm happy to hear that.
Sure. Just briefly, you did summarize the entire policy. As you know, under Chapter 94G, Section 3D, host community agreements are required for a medical -- or I'm sorry, a marijuana establishment to open. So you -- the town has entered into six host community agreements, all very advantageous to the town, in my opinion. But the issue is that none of them have actually been permitted and are up and running. They're in various stages of permitting. Some of them have received the applicable permits from the town, but they have not yet received all of their permits from the state. And I'm sure you'll remember that as of January 1st, everything switched over to the Cannabis Control Commission. So they have a lot going on there. So I'm not really sure how fast permits are actually coming out with them through the state. And so the town doesn't necessarily know what the impacts of these will be, to what degree there will be impacts. And there could be none. It's an unknown. And it's also because of the fact that, you know, medical marijuana was legalized in 2012, and recreational marijuana was legalized in 2016. And it's taken a long time to get regulations and things like that. So I do think that the town is justified in issuing a temporary freeze for six months simply because of the fact that the town has clearly said, "We understand what the legislature voted. We understand how the town voted," because the town was a yes town.
And it was a no town.
I'm sorry. It was a no town. But at town meeting, you entered into a bylaw. And you also were one of the first towns to have a medical bylaw in your zoning bylaw. And so I think that the town has shown that they're willing to do what the voters wanted. However, in this instance, you have enough behind you to say, "I think we need a six-month, just a temporary freeze." And in that six months, as the chairwoman had said, we could look into some zoning changes, whether it be an overlay or limiting the number of licenses in town, as long as the number is over 20 percent.
I have some questions. We all have the schedule of the, we'll call it, the six host community agreements. And then there's two other firms on there that don't have host community agreements. But if I went to Bonneville Farms, Amy, which is the fourth item down, they'd come to us for a medical one. You're saying if they come to us for a recreational one, it would be allowed based on the way we're crafting this freeze?
No. No. The -- well, before I say no.
Yeah.
It would depend on if we were going to amend the existing host community agreement or if we were going to enter into a new host community agreement. They already -- because they already have a medical host community agreement, it could be amended to add adult use. Going the other way would be more difficult. It would be more difficult to start with adult use and then go to medical, because medical -- a medical HCA is required under -- prior to them filing for any kind of permits.
Right. Because most of them have somewhat said, you know, they all started out with medical, because that's how it all started. And most of them made it clear that they were going to do recreational at some point in time.
And it would have to be in the same location, so that would factor into whether we can amend it or do we need a new one?
Well, that's also where I'll go to. So an amendment -- an amended one is a possibility. If I went to the second page, there's the Twisted Growers, which is the second from the last item. We did a recreational one. Well, I'll say we did a recreational one. There's multiple buildings that they own in that industrial park. So not only did they want to do it at 415, they talked about another address. And I don't have the number in front of me. It could be 440. But they made it clear that they were also going to put pot in one building, pot in another building. When they came to us, it was clear to us that 415 was the first building. So where do we stand on when we talk about addresses? Can they add addresses?
I would say no. That is not necessarily an amendment. That would be -- are they next door to each other? Is it something where they're taking down a wall?
Well, the same industrial park. One is 415 and one is, I'll say, three buildings away.
I think, if I may, I talked to their attorney today, Brian Salisbury. I believe it's right across the street, John, isn't it?
Well, it's diagonal. So -- but it's across the street, but it has a different address.
Yeah.
So they've made it clear to us since the beginning that they were going to operate out of two buildings now.
Both recreational, both adult use?
Well, one will be more of a grow facility, and the other one will be the recreational retail. This actually is the grow facility, they said. And they wanted to do a recreational at another number. And I didn't go back on my notes. So I'm going to jump around. So what we have is the same owner, same one. But what if he wants to move next door?
So...
And then I have other questions, but that's -- we can take them one at a time.
So he's not necessarily moving next door. He's expanding.
He's expanding, but he made that perfectly clear when he was in front of us.
I think, I mean, you're really asking with the existing companies. Because the locations, they can have multiple locations within that company. And I think that's really what you're kind of getting at, is that in the event that -- because, again, as we talked about briefly, the ownership can change at the highest level, but it's really at the company level that owns the license.
That'll be another one.
Yeah. So if, I mean, Twisted Growers is interested in obtaining or applying for a dispensary license, then that would still be the same existing company. And it's similar in the language in which...
Then that could be amended.
Right. Because it's somewhat similar in the language that we -- well, the issue's going to be, I don't know, because you'll need a new host community agreement on that application specific to that location.
Right. For them to go to the CCC with a host community agreement, it has to reflect that location.
Right.
Now, there can be one host community agreement for two locations, because we do have growing and dispensing, particularly in the medical. We have a lot of, you know, where they have -- because they have to. So they grow in one location, they dispense in another, usually very close by, if not adjacent.
Yeah.
But here, do we have any idea where they're at, at the CCC?
Brand-new.
Not even a thought.
When I say brand-new...
There's not even a...
You know, let's say they're into it for a couple of months, but into it, not gutting the building, that type of thing, still going through the process. So as you pointed out, the process is a long...
Yes, so this, even if a moratorium applied, it wouldn't...
A long, difficult one. Well, the case is that they made it clear to us. So let me go on to another one.
Sure.
If we take the last item, Adam and Matthew De Orio, they came to us in -- we did not go any further. They gave their presentation. Can we protect addresses? Because the address is 220 and 234, and then I'll get into ownership changes. That is, we clearly picked the industrial zone, which was Kenneth Wells Drive. The only one that's out of this is Millennium, which is zoned industrial. And that's where we originally wanted people to go, up in that neck of the woods, if I refer to it as that. They picked Kenneth Wells Drive because it was easier and there was available space. So can we protect addresses? Now, we haven't even done a host community agreement.
The way that this policy is drafted, they would not -- there is no protection. There is no grandfathering, nothing. If they don't have a -- if they do not have a signed host community agreement with the Board of Selectmen, by the time that this policy is signed and enacted, and they are part of the freeze.
Okay.
I mean, the option too, John, would be if you wanted to pull it back to three months. I mean, it's -- six months allows you to get essentially to a fall town meeting. And probably -- but three months from now would likely result in planning board holding public hearings with regard to any, you know, zoning changes or things that they might be interested in kind of putting forth. So, I mean, it would be something where if you didn't want to kind of fully commit for six months, you could change it to three months, you know, in contemplation of, you know, more direction from the town. Because I think Northeast Alternative, not Northeast Alternatives, Nature's Remedy, at least they're going to be planting, I think they just got their medical, you know, approval. So they'll be planting soon on that side, but they haven't received any approval from the adult use. And typically, that's taking somewhere between three and six months through the licensing process, it seems.
Right. I'm okay with the six, but I was hoping to expand it to addresses that we know are in Kenneth Wells Drive. Ownership changes, are they protected, not protected?
So the only thing that's protected is a signed host community agreement. So if the ownership changes, they have, as part of our host community agreement, they have to come -- they have to notify the town as to the new owners.
So if -- okay, please, we'll acknowledge the floor in a minute. If we went to Nature's Remedy, who is the furthest along, and that company, however it is incorporated, decides to sell two months from now, will this prevent us from doing a host community agreement with a new owner?
You wouldn't have to do a new host community agreement with a new owner, provided that they are a successor or a sign of the -- in our host community agreement, we call them the company of the company. So that would come down from the CCC. The CCC would determine if the company is actually changing or not. And if they're not changing, if it's just a successor or a sign, then we would just -- the host community agreement, once we're notified, it's still in effect.
But the sentence before your last, "The Board of Selectmen are considering a zoning amendment to impose a limit on the total amount of licenses for marijuana establishments." I'm not suggesting that. You might have added it as a reason for...
I put everything that I could think of in. So if you want that out, that's fine.
Well, I clearly am talking about -- let me just go that we're looking, I'm looking, I'm only one-third of the board, looking at the effects of the host community agreements that we've written. I'm not looking for things that are not tasked to do, and they might never be done. They might never be done in six months. And we might just roll over the six-month moratorium to another, six months or three months. Maybe we will, maybe we won't. So I didn't want to say we're working on something if we're really not. No one's been tasked to do that.
Okay, we can take that.
No one's been tasked to look at zoning. It has been suggested, back when we get into the business, it was suggested partially by me, that up on Route 44, there were some business districts. I had suggested to keep the underlying district as business, but to do an overlay for marijuana establishments. And because that's really the part of the town that we envisioned it to be in. And so maybe people want to do that, but I don't know that they will. And I don't know that anyone's tasked to do that. It's been discussed. So I didn't want to have something and show up in six months and say, "Did we impose a limit?" And so on and so forth. And so I didn't want to mislead anything.
Okay. Do you want to talk the thing down?
Just to my suggestion. Now, there's other views on that, too. So I'm okay with doing it for the six, and as long as the amendments can be done between recreational and between medical. I'm protecting...
So you will, I guess, the way that I'm seeing this with regard to amendments or not amendments, you will always, for the next six months, you will have six host community agreements?
Yes.
That's it?
Yeah.
So, Amy, and I don't know if it's more, if Zinc knows the answer to this question too, but with regard to the special permit that the planning board's been working on with the adult-use facilities, do you guys require an HCA before you -- you don't require that before you start hearing, or do you do? So that's kind of step one, is that? Okay. Because I know that that's kind of what it says, you know, down here, like, it doesn't impact an applicant's ability to seek appropriate zoning relief. So I just didn't know if that kind of coincided, or if our, you know, process kind of eliminated, it would stop that process as well.
Your second-to-last sentence.
The current actually requires the state give its permit before we issued the town special permit. The last iteration that we're going to be voting on...
Yep. Remove that, right. Yeah.
But right now, it's actually in effect until it's voted out.
Yeah, exactly.
So if I may, the purpose of that is that they can apply for zoning. So they can start the process without an HCA. So it's not stopping them from starting the process. And then as soon as they get an HCA, they're ready to go. But so it's not necessarily holding them back, that they have to actually get that HCA before they can apply to the planning board?
Yep.
The second-to-last sentence, negotiate the host community agreement, and does not any impact on applicant's ability to seek appropriate zoning relief. What zoning relief?
They need a special permit.
Okay. Not a change of zone, just...
No, zoning relief pursuant to the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Okay. So those are somewhat my questions, and you can open it up to whoever, Leah or myself in the pool.
Yeah, just, Zinc, one more clarification, just with regard to the process by which the special permit is being granted and the change that, you know, is proposed, that I guess the question I have for you is if this is -- there will be no special permit process even started if there is no HCA. And because that's kind of step one, is you've already gone in front of the Board of Selectmen. So it just kind of, it doesn't need to be changed in the policy unless you feel that that's something, the planning board feels that that's something where they'd want to start that process in anticipation or in wait of that secondary piece of the HCA coming from the Board of Selectmen.
Very fortunately, you don't have one in process right now.
Right. Okay.
The only one that was in process was granted.
Okay.
And there are none that were started yet that have submitted for...
For moving toward in the...
...submitted the next day.
To you. Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Good shape. Am I allowed to ask a question?
It's up to you. I'm done.
Yeah, I'm going to let Leah first.
Yeah, Leah first.
I just, as long as you're telling us that we can have a freeze, and we can renew that freeze, let's say, at the end of six months, if we still, I mean, eventually, at some point, we're still have the six places that haven't, you know, we're going to have to think about that. But, yeah, as long as we can renew the freeze even at least one time, if we still have no activity, or if for some reason we are, you know, talking about like a overlay or something, and we want to give it a little bit more time, then I'm okay with this.
So I did discuss this with numerous people at the firm, and it is our opinion that this is justified and that we can do this because of the fact that, first of all, that you've entered into six. So it's not like, it's not, this isn't a ruse, this isn't a moratorium, and that we're saying, "No, you can't ever come in." And that's clearly not the case. But it's also because of the fact that this law is, it's a brand-new area of law. And every single city in town, they're all different. So we can look to Brookline and see what's happening there. We can look to Lester and see what's happening there. But it doesn't help, because every city in town is different. I mean, right now, you know, you have six right near, you know, Route 495. So maybe there won't be as traffic impacts as there are in downtown Brookline. So we have to see what the actual impacts are, and we can't do that unless, until they start running, up, until they're up and running.
Right. So, yeah, I'm fine with this policy with striking, you know, to John's point, that the Board of Selectmen are considering a zoning amendment to impose a limit. Because I think if that is something that it was probably, it's probably likely to come, I would think, from the planning board.
And then what about, Madam Chairwoman, what about adding at the second-to-last sentence where it says applicant's ability to seek appropriate zoning relief? Should I add pursuant to the zoning bylaw?
Yeah.
Just to clarify that?
Right, always, yeah.
Okay.
So I...
Hold on.
Brian Salisbury for Twisted Growers, his question was, and he knows this moratorium is coming. It is diagonally or across the street. They're getting ready there. The engineer has started. They wanted to come before the Board of Selectmen in June.
For adult-use HCA?
Right. They're the second to the last one, Amy, and they made it clear to us that the second building is always in play.
It would be the same almost.
It's not something new because of the meetings. They made that clear in the beginning.
So we would need to get from them all of the documentation that we get from every original, because we have, and then we'd have to just check and make sure that it's the same.
But I think, though, I mean, John, if we change the policy just to state, you know, is a temporary freeze and signing any additional news, any additional host community agreements with new companies? I mean, that...
I agree with that. I mean, if it said that, I agree with that.
It's dangerous?
I was going to say, but is that...
I agree with that.
Can we do that? Yeah. You would be looking at, because you could have, you could have a company with a location completely opposite of each other that are doing two separate things, that need two separate permits and two separate licenses from the CCC. They would need two separate HCAs.
But they're not the same company. I mean, we're only talking about, you know, the existing companies that we've been talking to, that we've vetted their plans, that we knew already about their plans.
I think you're covered with the fact that it says no new, because this is, Twisted Growers isn't going to be new as well.
Because you'd have an amendment to the HCA.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you've addressed the six, that there's six in process.
And again, an HCA is a, it's a contract between two parties, and so it can be amended as long as the two parties agree.
Okay.
Should we write it in, like, specifically, just for them?
No. Because they might not, it might not come to fruition, who knows? I would not advise.
Yeah. So any other further discussion in the board? I think what we have in front of us right now is the policy as drafted, with the exception of cutting out that paragraph that says the Board of Selectmen considering a zoning amendment, adding inappropriate zoning relief pursuant to the zoning bylaw. Any other on the board?
No.
And I'll just...
No.
Mr. Bossay?
Thank you.
Could you move to the microphone? They'll ask you to do that for Lake Camp purposes.
The first question, council, right? Town council? Okay. First question is on existing HCAs. I'll make up a name. John Smith at One Main Street has an HCA. He elects to sell that land. One question, does the HCA go with him? And two, do they have to be vetted again to the new owners for the HCA?
Yes. So the, under the host community agreement, if there's a new owner, they have to notify the town. A new owner has to be approved, first and foremost, a new owner has to be approved by the CCC to take over that permit, or that license. So once the new owner is approved by the state to take over that license, they would then, they would then notify the town that they have been approved to take over the license, and then, and that's the new, they're now notifying the town of the new ownership.
Okay. Second question, on the moratorium.
I did have one, if I could add one thing.
Please.
If they are in any way changing the license, it's all, it becomes all new. So it's if, you know, if John Smith is going to sell to, you know, Dave White, it has to be that same license that's already, that Dave, that John Smith owns.
And Dave White will be properly vetted by the state?
Yes. And it can't be a different kind of license. It's, he's only transferring the what he has.
All right. Second question is the most obvious one, on the moratorium that's being pushed forward now. The issue is that if we're, if we've got six HCAs at this moment, and we're putting a moratorium on more for a number of reasons, there's comments by the board that says that we will continue to accept applications and look into them and research them, that doesn't sound like a moratorium to me.
Mr. Bossay, I don't believe anybody on the board made those comments, so I'm not sure where that's coming from.
All right. So why are we entertaining further conversation on other HCAs if there is a moratorium for six months, so to speak, that's put in place? Why are people allowed to come and make applications for them if we have a moratorium on them and for their initial and internal review? Please.
So, a couple things. One, nobody's come in front of us for an HCA as of right now.
Now, at this date, my point is, why are we open to allowing people to come in for more while we have the moratorium?
Well, one other point of clarification, we don't have, first of all, it's a temporary freeze. And secondly, we haven't voted on it yet. We are just about to make that vote. So I will ask for your cooperation, and the board is going to take this to a vote, because we have a 7:00 PM meeting. So all in favor?
Aye.
Is this the motion?
The motion.
What do you have?
Yeah, I made the motion of the amendment. So all in favor? Aye.
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 There we go. We have a temporary freeze in place. Thank you.
Let me just second one.
Leah?
Well, that's why, yeah. I...
So for clarification, because I'm not sure of your procedures, I'm asking specifically, during this moratorium, will other applications be reviewed?
No. I mean...
Thank you.
There's no reason to do so. Zinc, just for clarification purposes?
They won't be signed, definitely.
Yeah, they won't be signed. So... So Zinc, just for clarification, it's just that piece where it says the Board of Selectmen are considering a zoning amendment to impose a limit on the total number of licenses for marijuana establishments. That's been crossed out. So that doesn't exist on this piece. And then also to seek appropriate zoning relief in accordance with the zoning bylaw. So. Agenda item number two. This is, and thank you, Amy.
There's no reason to do so zinc just for clarification purposes.
They won't be signed definitely.
They won't be signed.
Yeah they won't be signed so zinc just for clarification it's just that piece where it says the board of selectmen are considering a zoning amendment to impose a limit on the total number of licenses for marijuana establishments that's been crossed out so that doesn't exist on this piece and then also to to seek appropriate zoning relief in accordance with the zoning bylaw so agenda item number two this is and thank you Amy seven o'clock I was trying to get you out of here on time seven oh one.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So we have warrant review for the special and annual town meeting scheduled for June third two thousand nineteen we have the warrants for both the special and annual town meetings the finance committee is actually not posted for warrant review tonight I saw two members of the FinCom here I don't know where they went one two they're back so Darren George if you wanna come to the table find a seat somewhere participate in the conversation I know that you're not posted for tonight but that works for us.
The warrant review.
Thank you.
All right so Rita I think has provided us all with a great overview of what's going on with the special town meeting warrant so we have five articles on the special town meeting warrant first one is a vote to transfer funds from the street lighting expenses to pay a prior year bill from fiscal year eighteen for five hundred and thirteen dollars from Middleborough Gas and Electric to repair the streetlights on Kenneth Welch Drive the second is a vote to transfer funds for the fiscal year nineteen end of year transfers you can I'll have you explain some of the transfers.
Okay that's attached to the handout as of right now we're proposing the town accountant and I transfers from the reserve fund the outer district Bristol Aggie tuitions to cover the snow and ice deficit of approximately.
What page are you on Rita where are you reading?
It's the last page.
The transfer page.
Oh okay go ahead I'm sorry.
The snow and ice deficit is a hundred and eight thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars we have to cover the debt exclusion for the interest for the third band on the nuclear station for eleven thousand seven thirty-four and the legal budget I'll need to transfer to cover we've had a lot going on this year with border health host community agreements which I'll get reimbursed on for part of it cable advisory legal fees will run over by about thirty-six hundred they're negotiating Comcast agreement unemployment expense it was a big deficit this year of ten thousand we pay as we go we don't pay in like private businesses and that should not increase anymore but we had some employees that were laid off from different departments and they're just part-time employees but they qualify if they get laid off from their main job not the town we have to pay part of the unemployment and the last two transfers are for the highway department the fuel system came in over a little bit over what we had budgeted at the capital budget and the salt buildings came in four thousand so the total transfers as of today is a hundred and eighty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-two.
So Rita just curious with regards to the reserve fund what are their transfers other than the ramp I know from the FinCom that happened this year for the old townhouse because.
That's the only one but I'm using the rest of the reserve fund.
For the article.
For the next.
Okay.
Article three.
Perfect all right there we go there.
Article three is the balance in the reserve fund of a hundred and sixty-two thousand to pay for the equipment and licenses townwide we have to replace all of the PCs and all of our licenses will no longer be supported we're on Windows seven then a new copier and a plotter scanner for the building department and the board of selectmen's office is seventeen thousand and then on the stormwater management for the highway department we have twenty-five thousand in a prior year article and we need ninety thousand to do year one and two of the stormwater plan and then for years twenty-one twenty-two and twenty-three we'll only need between forty and fifty thousand because originally when the stormwater came out we thought we were going to be doing two hundred and fifty thousand a year so this was really good news now that the plan has been finalized.
Great.
Article.
Oh sorry.
Oh sorry.
I was sorry I'm going back to the budget the four thousand dollars for the highway buildings.
Yeah.
Were those the storage sheds?
The salt sheds.
The two new forty by thirty storage sheds the ones that were seventy-five so they were almost eighty thousand dollars not seventy-five.
No this year I'm looking at what was this year this was approved last year.
All right so I'm just wondering where that.
On both items when Franklin went out to bid and got quotes.
Yeah.
Even going with the lowest by the time it was ordered there were increases.
Okay.
When we actually went out to bid he came to us with quotes but when we went out to bid they came in a little over what the quotes were.
Okay all right.
Now article four is we're not quite sure this is regarding the PEG access funds the DOR is saying that we have to have town meeting approve a receipts reserve for further appropriation they put a moratorium on this for six months but it runs out as of July first and in speaking with our cable attorney our town council and several different towns everybody's doing something different right now the funds go directly to Lakeham and we meet once a year to go over their financial audited financial statements in the past the money used to come to the town the treasurer would put it into the general fund and then would turn around and send a vendor check to the cable committee these are the fees that the four and a half percent fee that all of our subscribers pay that comes to the town and that's how they built the cable studio they pay their executive director and all the equipment that's here so now what the town of Norton for instance does it just like right now the money goes directly to Lakeham it does not pass through the town at all and the town of Norton's not doing anything they're gonna have it continue on we're working with town council Greg Corbo went to the partners in the firm two said do nothing two said do the reserve receipts reserved.
Clearly they need a fifth partner make a decision.
So it's right up in the air we won't know probably until a day to a day or two before town meeting.
Right okay so we'll just hold that as placeholder.
And then article five is the zoning bylaw amendment to update our marijuana uses.
Zinc left.
And the planning board did hold their hearing last Thursday night and the vote was two extensions two yes and one no so it passed by a majority.
So this article two which just to clarify article five on the special town meeting warrant what it really is is it started out as a housekeeping article based upon the fact that the Department of Public Health got consumed into the Cannabis Control Commission at the end of December and the Department of Public Health used to run the medical marijuana program in the state of Massachusetts and that went under the guise and the umbrella of the Cannabis Control Commission effective January of two thousand nineteen so our existing bylaws that exist from medical marijuana point to CMRs that do not exist any longer so a lot of this is clarifying language the other two pieces that it does is it also if we had medical co- really co-located operators where they'd have a medical operation and an adult use operation in the same facility or the same location that they had to duplicate their process through the system by going to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for the medical use and they'd have to go to the planning board for a similar special permit but go through a completely different set of public hearings and processes to get their adult use located at the same exact location with the same equipment under the same guise so it was designed as a housekeeping article with that in mind the other piece related to it as zinc had alluded to is the fact that the applicants prior to even applying for a special permit the way that the the bylaw was written was that they had to go and get a provisional license from the Cannabis Control Commission prior to them being able to enter into a special to even start negotiating I guess a special permit with the planning board and or the zoning board of appeals and therefore that was a long drawn-out process where that is also kind of streamlining that again now that we have a moratorium on the host community agreements if people decide at town meeting that they choose to you know wait and try to see what the ramifications might be there's additional time for the planning board to weigh in even though the planning board did have hold their public hearings and they voted on this one.
So can you tell us the vote again by the planning board there were two extensions.
Two extensions.
Yep.
Two members voted yes.
Yep.
To recommend to town meeting to approve and it was one no. So it is.
So that's definitely not a unanimous recommendation from the planning board.
All right so I guess that's a special town meeting warrant seven o'clock June third the high school.
Well six thirty for the special.
Ah right I'm reading the wrong one six thirty for the special you can show it for both the annual town meeting warrants so Rita you wanna give it a go?
Okay article one is the town budget which includes fire police schools health insurance and if the finance committee would stay for the next item it's like a forty-page document I balanced it Friday night but another change today but I thought it was important to at least let you know that we have a balanced budget and we'll finalize the document within the next week or so so that everyone can see the full document that will be presented at town meeting and will be put on the website also.
And we'll meet again prior to that.
Yes.
And we'll talk about that maybe.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah so that any of the newer members will hold a separate meeting approve some minutes and let you ask any questions about the special or the annual or the whole budget so that's article one and including it'll be just about thirty million dollars if we include the million in capital requests so we're gonna almost hit thirty million that's with the school budget too article two is for the park enterprise budget and article three is for the transfer station landfill budget article four is our annual funding of contractual obligations for retiring town employees we put twenty thousand towards that every year and article five in the handout I tried to be very clear it lists the nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred approved in the capital items at last meeting I don't think there was a quorum with the finance committee but and then after that I've explained where all the money is coming from to fund the nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand there is no borrowing we're using old capital warrant articles that had money left over in them for instance the seal coating for the town office fire station we had twelve thousand the police station roof that's the big one there was a hundred and eight thousand nine hundred left over from that and the board of assessors had budgeted had warrant articles for three years in a row for seventeen thousand which they don't need to use because they have an outside consultant doing their evaluations and then from one-time monies the water infrastructure stabilization fund that we had for the water line running to the town hall I'll close that out and some sale of real estate it's thirteen thousand two oh four they're very old small properties we sold many years ago and the town accountant would like to clear that up we sold the assessors for two hundred and forty thousand one hundred the Howland Road the sale of Howland Road that debt is actually paid off in two thousand and twenty and we're going to use three hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and forty of that money which is I believe the balance so that will close out Howland Road and then the sale of the water tower is the remaining balance of forty thousand.
Yeah and I think it's important to note too that the sale of Howland Road the uses on that money is actually restricted to capital assets with a life of five years or longer which is why that's the majority of what is funding the new pumper.
And the sale of the.
And same with the sale of the assessors building.
Assessors has to be for five years or longer and I reviewed them with town council and he agreed that.
The highway.
Purchase these capital items with those funds. Article six is to appropriate five thousand for the Middleborough Lakeville Haring Fisher Commission for pilot projects we did five thousand last year Middleborough did five thousand last year and they've already voted their five thousand and then there's thirty-five thousand in the state budget to help them with the flow of the Massey River okay so article seven is to authorize the selectmen to acquire through purchase gift or eminent domain the temporary and permanent easements for the Route seventy-nine project I don't have a dollar amount yet for that we will have to have that amount before town meeting I'll have an estimate from the appraiser but we'll probably have to go back to town meeting in the fall.
To finalize the dollar amount.
Because we really don't know how many of the temporary I spoke to the appraiser today I think there's a hundred and fifteen easements some are temporary some are permanent but Massey OT is gonna tell us how many they're gonna do and how many the town's gonna have to do.
Does seven need a dollar amount or is the dollar amount under article eight where it's simply a road bond chapter ninety that we can use the intent is that we use the four million dollar road bond to do the acquiring if if needed for the easements for Route seventy-nine so I don't expect you to have a a good number on number seven it's an estimate that the state.
It will be an estimate.
An estimate that the state gave us and so that estimate was two million dollars by another town and that's the estimate that they gave us.
Remember it was three point one million going.
And its highest.
Right well you have to pay the assessor.
Started as a couple hundred thousand.
That type of thing but but you can spend a lot of time on seven.
Yeah.
Just a guess the four million dollars is the money unless you're intending of having say two million dollars for seven and two million dollars for eight.
Well eight's gotta be the full four because that's authorizing the borrowing.
Right.
So and the it really would be that eight would split the four but I think I mean.
The seven is a guess but they gave you that one we went to that meeting.
Right but the appraiser feels that it will be a lot less than what I would say not more than two million now John.
Yeah because the two are.
It's fine we'd spend too much time on that the state says one thing the assessor says something else and trust me it always seems to be higher than one anticipated so don't spend a lot of time on it.
Yeah because the bottom line is that we're really selling seven and eight.
That's right.
The town payers.
As a package.
As a package.
The taxpayers together because the whole funding will come from a debt exclusion to be able to pay for the easements and the takings of Route seventy-nine and then the remainder will be used for road improvements.
Are you sure you need a dollar amount on seven I thought it was just voting to authorize.
I'm reading it again John and you might be right.
I think you're just voting to authorize a purchase gift or eminent domain I don't think you're putting a dollar amount there the dollar amount's underrated.
The town council Sharon Everett had said you know we we need to have some idea of what it is but I guess we don't I'm reading it now and maybe we don't need the dollar amount.
Because we don't have to do it we can still back out of it worst case scenario if it I mean I think that's what the article you know essentially is we sold the water tower and sold the assessors building authorized us to enter into the sale you know with that condition.
But it's letting you acquire the easements you're gonna need.
Right we'll need to.
Documents.
If we put a dollar figure on it of one point seven million let's say and we need more then we don't have enough so I think it's just saying that the town is authorizing us to actually do that.
Yeah we'll just check the town council.
Later on it does say or borrow a sum of money so it is yes we do need.
An amount.
Yeah an amount usually it's the first sentence.
Yeah don't don't spend a lot of time on the amount.
Okay and article eight as you said is the road bond and the rain's working on. And the rain's working on a presentation with Franklin for that.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My first, it's going back to Article 7. My concern is that it is, it has a "lot" in there, and I wonder if it's understandable that we do get to town meeting, that people understand what we're...
That's what the selectmen will explain, Ted.
You said a "not," right? You said a "not," right? Yeah, the negative aspect of it, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's one concern. And are we done with 8, or...
We can ask questions if you want.
Okay, so can I ask questions with 8?
Well, it's up to you, but yeah.
Yeah.
It's the last sentence about the vote not taking effect until the town votes to exempt from limitation of total taxes imposed by year 2009 to 1/2. The amount required to pay the principal and interest for the borrowing authorized by the vote. So is that saying that we are, is it two parts really here in 8?
Yeah.
And can we divide this as a question?
Well, no, so the first part is town meeting vote, the second part is a ballot, so it'll go to the taxpayers, similar to the last bonding with the police station. So what we'd have to do is kind of put that in there to say, look, are you going to authorize... Really, it's to the town. Will the town authorize override, essentially, debt exclusion, to go out and raise another $4 million? And then it goes really onto the ballot, where it goes to everybody in town.
And I think the motion includes something to the wording on that it goes to ballot.
Right, so I understood that's what we're, we need to do. I'm just wondering whether it would be more effective to separate, to divide it, because if the town does not vote to go to an override, does that make the first part of this article moot?
Well, the whole thing is the same thing. Like, it's all one article, because it's really, we can't do anything, we don't have enough money with our, you know, $390,000 that the state so generously gives us to repair our roads every single year. So if the town decides not to borrow $4 million through a debt exclusion, then we have no ability to really do even 7, you know, unless somehow we miraculously come up with whatever we need to, you know, pull together the money for Route 79. So it's not, it's all one, like, the whole, all of those words all relate to one action, if that makes sense.
Is it?
It's, I think it should hopefully be, the motion itself will explain it, and then we'll explain it to town meeting in terms of, this is really, you know, something that's been in the works for a number of different years with regard to the ability for the town to fund all the road infrastructure improvements that we've been looking to fund. And to do that, it would be a 2 and 1/2 override debt exclusion, which would then go to the ballot for the townspeople's to vote, you know, on that. If they, if it passes and then it gets voted down at the ballot, you have the ability to go back to the ballot and try it again. So that's, but town meeting vote has to happen in order for that to happen.
Everyone will understand that's what they're...
We'll have to...
Saying, let's put this on a ballot.
Yeah, and we'll have a whole presentation that will explain exactly what that $4 million in theory could be used for, between what we had from the engineer and kind of ranking all of the roads and their repair state, and what needs to be done to those roads in priority order. So depending upon what happens with the appraisal on Route 79 and the easements and what that takes, if it is 1.2 million, then we have another 2.8 to use on the roads. And that will enable us to entail to do, you know, six different roads, as opposed to, if it comes in at $3 million, we can only do two roads. So, and all of that will be kind of put together in a presentation format.
And so there will be a map as well?
What, a map? Although, I suppose if you want to throw a map in there, he does have a map, so he's got a nice map that's all color-coded.
Okay.
But I don't know if it'll be color-coded.
The number of roads, well...
The color copier, I'm not sure.
I think there's two questions. I'm back to the number 7. Is the dollar amount requested, Rita, in the verbiage somewhere?
Yes, down near the end.
And borrow a sum of money.
Raise appropriate transfer and/or borrow...
How many sentences are you up on that? Okay, okay, I see that. Raise or appropriate, okay. That's going to be a guesstimate. Don't spend a lot of time on it.
Yeah, and we'll have to go back in the fall.
And when I jump to number 8, let's say that the state says it's 3 million, the survey or the appraiser says it's 2 million. So pick a number, 2 or 3 million. Number 8, then, outlining the roads that you have a potential to do, only do $2 million worth of them, because you don't have to do $20 million worth of road projects.
Right, it's just going to show all of the roads that would make up, in theory, you know, to that number, from the high level. So, you know...
There won't be many of them.
Right, it's probably going to be four. You know, maybe at max, it'll be four roads.
We don't want to confuse it with 20 roads. We're only going to do 2 to 4 roads.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we would not, we would not be doing those. We have enough money to do, we've talked about Freetown Street, we've talked about Precinct Street, but we're not going to borrow that money until we start Route 79. We're authorized to do it.
Well, I think that'll be, the timing of that will depend upon probably Franklin's assessment of what he has capability to do once all that happens. But yeah, we're not going to go and start spending money on the roads until we...
You don't know what that amount is until you do Route 79.
Right, until we have the appraisal.
And that's going to be one to two years away, knowing that number. So if you did 4 million, you have to keep 3 million to the side.
Well, we'll have the appraisal for what the easements will cost, because that's going to, we'll have the estimate going to town meeting, but then we'll have the actual appraisal that'll get done. And when will that...
The appraisal will have it at the town meeting.
Right, we'll have it sometime in the summer or the fall, or something like that. So we won't be doing this anyways, likely, until probably the following summer?
You can't go take it $4 million, spend 3 million to fix some roads, and you're back to no money for Route 79.
You know, it's the secondary piece. So once Route 79, which is the priority, gets done, we have the...
Once 79 is done, then you have...
Well, the appropriation for 79 is done, because it's really just getting the appraisal, which will determine exactly how much it is to actually take the easements.
You're not going to have, right, you're not going to have the actual number for a long time.
Couple months.
What you could do is do the 2 million on Article 7 as a debt exclusion. And in Franklin's plan, he wants to do from Clear Pond Road the rest of the way.
Well...
So if there's money left over in Article 7, that could be used to finish the rest of Route 79.
Yeah, but you don't know what's left over in Article 7 for a year and a half.
Eventually, right.
You don't know that.
But the $2 figures are going to be separated out. What's for number 7 and what's for number 8?
Yeah, and it's just, it's a guess at this point in time, so...
And if you, if the town votes 4 million and we don't, it comes in under that, we won't borrow the 4 million.
We won't want that much, right.
We'll just do short-term borrowings.
Yeah, but we're not going to borrow until you get well into Route 79 project.
Absolutely.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Sir, can I ask a question? Is 4 million the cap, or is it 4 million or not?
Yeah, it's 4 million's the cap. We didn't...
If the town said, "We don't want 4 million," we're okay with 2 million, or is it 4 million or not?
We can't amend it on town meeting floor, though, but what we could do is we could go back for another, right?
You can increase the amount, but they could...
But we could reduce it.
You could reduce it.
Yeah.
The danger is that the state has inferred that it's a $3 million process, and appraisal looks at it and says, "Well, it's only $2 million." So we thought that money left over would get us into 2 to 4 roads to do further, because there is not enough money through Chapter 90, state funding, to fix the roads. So you would be back in three or four years for another road bond, possibly, possibly. Okay.
All right, I think we're done with the roads.
Article 9 is to approve the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School's district agreement that's very outdated, and the other, all five communities have agreed, it's updated with the Department of Education and Secondary Education has approved it. So that should be an easy item to pass at town meeting. Article 10 is a zoning bylaw amendment for temporary licenses, and it's transferring the authority from the Board of Selectmen to the Building Commissioner to streamline the process for, especially when someone's home burns down. It never fails, they come in the day after a selectmen's meeting, and we have to schedule it this way. It will make it much easier for residents to just go to the Building Commissioner. Article 11 is to increase the square footage that's disturbed under site plan, site plan review for residential homes. Currently, it's, it says 3,000 square feet, and to have our stormwater, this is part of updating our stormwater management plan, square footage has been increased to an acre of land, 43,560 square feet.
I have a question about one. They're striking out the conservation piece?
Yes.
And so it leaves a lot of room for error, so are you saying that they don't need to go to conservation?
Yeah, no, if there's wetlands, they will have to go to conservation.
So how does the planning board know that?
The Building Commissioner knows that, because he's the enforcing officer on, and he's very good about wetlands.
Why is it...
Because it doesn't make sense, I realize what you're saying, for which filing a notice of intent is not required.
It seems as though they should leave something in there to say, you know, once the notice of intent has been approved.
They all go past the Conservation Commission. I know that Nate spent a lot of time on this.
I think the points will take, it needs further explanation that we just can't screw it into the bylaw. So Nate has to cover, he'll have to explain that it's covered under the Conservation bylaw. And I'm sure it is, but he needs to address that. You just can't take it up with the explanation. It's covered in another section.
He said it shouldn't have been there to begin with.
Yeah, I get that, because it's covered under another section, but it's easier to say that, that it's covered in another section. I don't know what that section is, but we need to come up with that in the explanation, because it would be picked up by everyone.
And Article 9 is to accept Settucket Trail as a town...
12.
Would I say 9?
12, yeah.
Article 4.
All right. Any other discussion on the warrants? Okay. I guess we're moving on. So agenda item number 3 is to review the fiscal year '20 budget. We have a balanced budget due to Rita's hard work on Friday night. A couple bigger changes that came through, certainly from the regional finance subcommittee meeting from last Wednesday. We ended up with a $105,000 reduction in the school budgets assessment to the town of Lakeville. That was combined between a $75,000 reduction between numbers at the top level of their budget and with savings that they found, along with the $50,000 increase in the school choice revenue number coming into their budget, on top of the $30,000 that was brought forth from the state through the House budget. So that budget has been reduced, the assessment to the town of Lakeville by about $105,000. We had previously put in $70,000 reduction as an estimate and placeholder, which is why you see a change of about $30,000 in that line item. So we have a summary of how we managed to balance the budget. It is still hinging upon the 40s money, which we're hoping to get from the state, about $150,000, but we have been told that it exists in the state budget. So that being said, there are no significant changes, other than the school's budget reduction. We have an increase in the planning board budget by $300.
Actually, it's $150.
$150, oops.
I increased to 300. Yeah, I caught that today.
And I'll get behind a $150 increase. We have an increase in the fire department budget by $3,000. We have a couple reductions in the pension assessment and the insurance, and the landfill subsidy has been reduced $10,000. That being said, we have a balanced budget.
And there was a small change today in the library budget by about 700. So my overage right now is around 4,000. So I'll probably just adjust estimated receipts. And then I can explain, hopefully, when the finance committee meets, I'll have the full budget document to hand out, and then if you have any questions, because we're getting right down to the Y amount to have in time for town meeting.
All right. Any questions on the budget for the board? No? No? Okay, balanced budget, it's exciting. Agenda item number 4, we have a request for a door-to-door sales permit from Dermity Cleaners. Carrie Dermity here. Welcome.
I'm actually going to use my cell phone this time.
All right. So we received a request from you that you'd like to go door-to-door to put door hangers on residents' doors. The hours proposed would be Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I know we've had this request in front of us as a board, I believe it was, I don't know, four or five years ago?
It wasn't that long.
Three years ago?
2015.
2015, four years ago.
Yeah, it seems like yesterday.
Me, too. Yeah, I agree. That being said, so I don't know if you want to give a little explanation?
Well, we do this type of solicitation in several towns, and it's a little bit different. Our intention is not to disrupt people in their homes, but to make the service available and known to the people in town. We do have a home pickup and delivery, and we have roughly 100 residents that take advantage of that presently. But getting to the neighbors is sometimes, you know, it's a difficult task. So my, what the plan is and what we do in other towns is I, the pickup and delivery person will go to the neighbor of a current customer, and he'll leave something on their door. We don't knock, my drivers are drivers, they're not, they're not salespeople, and it's a way that we can expand our service without, you know, bothering people and, but making the service known. I have an example of what we would leave to show you, a little flyer. And attached, we would have a bag that the, that would be left for the initial use, and then from there, we would give the customer vinyl bags that were more permanent, that would use on a weekly basis. So it's not exactly what we had before. It is not intrusive, and we wouldn't be bothering the people, we'd just be, we can't leave it on mailboxes, but it, because it's a federal offense to do that, so we would leave it on a door at the home. And I'd be happy to, you know, really, a driver would miss, we'd go like 25 a week per driver. So really, I'd say if you want to put a limit on it, at the most, we would probably try to solicit from 50 houses in the course of a week.
Yeah. Okay. So, John, I know, you know, in the past, we've never allowed for any door-to-door solicitation, you know, as a board within the town, just mainly due to kind of privacy concerns and people wanting a little bit more of their own kind of home to be their castle. I have no problem maintaining that policy. I know last time, we did encourage you to go to the state for a state hawkers license, which would allow for that to happen. I don't know if that...
I looked into that, and the language on that allows you to, it does not supersede a local rule.
Okay. Yeah, so, John, I don't know what your thoughts are.
Well, right, I mean, I love your business. I think it's a great idea. But the next guy comes in and wants to, he has a crappy business that no one wants, and we got strangers driving in driveways, and to me, it sets a precedent that you might have a truck that says, "Your cleaning business," but the next person says, "Well, jeez, you gave it to the cleaning guy." We don't allow anyone in anyone's dri, I'm not giving any business permission to drive into people's driveways that you're uninvited. I think there's some religious ones that are exempt from that, but I just wouldn't do it. It's like asking me, "Can I drive in someone's driveway?" I love your business, I love your idea, and if you did it, you know, you do it, but I cannot give you my permission to do... do that.
Okay.
And, and so there are other people. I go by my mailbox, and people can't hand things on the mailbox, so they throw, throw it on the ground. We drive around town, and they're all at the base of the mailboxes. I love your idea, I love your business, and I think you're a great guy. But the next guy comes in and he has some, wants to sell trash magazines and, and junk and say, whoa, you let the cleaning guy do it. I, I don't like the idea of strangers allowing businesses to go in people's driveways in Lakeville.
Terminex was out in, was this weekend on Main Street.
What?
And he knocked on my door, and I said, where's your state permit for it? Terminex is out in Lakeville right now.
Well, there's always people that, that try to beat the system. You're an honest guy that's coming to us.
Yeah, that's why I came before.
You're an honest guy coming to us asking for permission. And if the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts came, I'd say, no. But if you did it, maybe no one's going to complain because they got their uniforms on and their scout masks are at the end of the driveway. It just, to me, is not a good idea. I love your business, and I think it's great for your business to do it. But you wouldn't get my permission to do it. And, and I thought that Tracy, I mean, you were under the impression that state hawkers and peddler's license is vetted by the state.
I'll, I'll take another look at that.
They are, Mr. Dermity. What the process is, if you get your state hawkers and peddler's license, you still have to abide by any regulations that the town sets out for door-to-door sales. In other words, you'd still have to check in with the police department every day, give them your vehicle IDs, your license, a copy of your license, and you'd still have to every day call in and say, we're going to be in this area of Lakeville. But it does allow you to operate in any community in the state.
Okay.
Meeting their town's regulations. You just don't need to get an actual permit from the town.
So if I got a state hawkers license?
You would be allowed to go door-to-door in Lakeville, provided that you met with the requirements from our bylaw, which is check in with the police, notify them every day where you're going to be, and give them identifying information about who's going to be out there.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, the help guide, believe me, oh, can't do it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right. So our next item on the agenda is to discuss the, I guess we should wait for Leah to come back? I don't know, she's gone. Kind of waiting.
Manager?
Yes, Tracy.
How do we want this to be?
No action.
Are we going to vote?
The board took no action.
No question.
Nothing. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is to discuss the police chief vacancy. So until formal action is taken at a later date by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to the general policy, when the police chief is away, Lieutenant Perkins is in charge with Lieutenant Joyce as his backup, is what we have. I guess we're here to discuss what is going on with police chief vacancy. Are you asking us, or? Yeah, so I know that, you know, I did not speak with either lieutenant this past week, which I was going to do. So I have nothing really to contribute to this conversation as of this time. Certainly, we met in executive session last week, and at that point, we designated, you know, that the same policy would still apply right now. Lieutenant Perkins in charge, with Lieutenant Joyce as the backup.
I mean, I certainly met with Officer Joyce and, and the acting chief, Matt Perkins, and I certainly met with the union president. But I'm somewhat being advised by the attorneys that we've done what we're going to do at this point in time of making Matt Perkins the acting chief with Lieutenant Joyce being the backup. But I'm somewhat disappointed that we're not talking about it further so that if we're under direction from the attorney, I'll buy into that. But I'm not going to buy into it for a long period of time. So if, if we're not going to take any further action tonight, I want to know from the attorney when we can schedule that meeting to, for the next step in, in getting a permanent chief. So if I'm under orders by attorney, I'll, I'll respect that a little bit tonight, but not for very long.
Right, and, and I'd like to know, you know, the timeline too, so I can speak to lieutenants as well, so.
I mean, I can get into my opinions, but I, I can't do that supposedly.
So one of the things that, sorry. One of the things that historically, or has happened in the past in terms of when someone takes, assumes this position, do we automatically start paying them in that capacity? So do we start paying them in the capacity of the chief? I know that came up in a previous, with a previous vacancy of a similar situation.
I'll give you my opinion. If it has a life of its own, that is, it goes on for a long period of time, we should do that. I thought this is not a simplistic, it's a very important decision to do, but the postings of the jobs and moving forward should be done expeditiously. So I guess if you said we can talk about it in an open session with attorneys in attendance in a week or two, I guess I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we just need to get legal counsel to weigh in on anything related to this discussion, unfortunately.
Can we ask some of the police officers that are here how things are functioning?
I don't think that's appropriate to do in a public forum.
Okay.
You know, I think that that's something we can do offline, but we're kind of, at this point, just waiting for legal counsel to get back to us.
Well, I'm just curious why, if anyone has anything to say, because I do see lots of folks in the audience.
Yeah, I mean-
You probably saw that on the-
Yeah, I, I know, and we apologize that we've just been told that we can't really speak about this.
It's all surprise, come on up.
Everything's-
I think you have a number of us here tonight, just because we're curious to find out what you're going to do. It is an important decision that you have to make, and we'd just like to know what the process is going to be going forward. That's why you see a lot of faces and stuff here.
Yeah, and we'll certainly, obviously, keep you informed as we're allowed to have those conversations, so.
Thank you.
Sorry for that being so anticlimactic. It's kind of like, that being said, okay, agenda item number six, review and vote on the Joint Transportation Planning Group, the JTPG appointments. So this is from Serpide, and right now, we currently have Franklin Moniz as our delegate and Rita Garbit is our alternate delegate. Her appointment terms, and his appointment terms expire May 24th, 2020.
And typically, I'm then the alternate, so if Franklin can't go to a meeting, I do go, but I didn't know, who Leah's the liaison, if she'd want to go. I think at the beginning, when the new town administrator added this, everything, it was an idea.
I'm, I'm okay with us voting on the delegate of Franklin Moniz and just waiting on the alternate delegate.
I don't know about waiting because, I mean, Franklin and I have had conversations, and I already told him that, you know, for some reason, he can't get to some of these meetings because I am the liaison, so I would be perfectly happy to be his alternate if he can't. Like Rita said, we may not necessarily want to add this right away to the new town administrator, so.
I think I've only gone a couple of times. Franklin goes to all of her meetings.
Yeah, I mean, even, you know, last week, I called him up. I said, can you make it? He said, yep. I said, okay, great. If you can't make it, just let me know. You know, so he's pretty good about going to the stuff.
And if you do go to one, you probably won't want to go to another one.
Well, yeah, and I mean, he said that they're great for networking for him, so, you know, and-
All right, and that's fine. So I'll make a motion then that we appoint Franklin Moniz as our delegate and Leah Fabian as the alternate delegate, with an appointment term to expire May 24th, 2020.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Agenda item number seven, this is a request for the appointment of a full-time firefighter paramedic, Tyler Knight. So Chief, welcome.
Thank you. I'm requesting the consideration or recommending the appointment of Tyler Knight, the position of full-time firefighter. He comes to us by Wareham EMS, where he's a full-time paramedic, does 911 response there. And he's also been on Berkeley Fire, nine years or six years?
Six years.
Six years on Berkeley Fire. So he comes in with experience, he has his paramedic license, and the typical conditions apply, the one-year probation and then the academy as well. His family's here as well. No pressure, though.
All right. It's July 31st, right, is a-
Well, typically, it's July 31st, and then we would reappoint.
We'll reappoint, yeah. Okay, so I will make a motion that we appoint Tyler Knight as a full-time firefighter, paramedic contingent upon a successful completion of the department-approved physical examination, a physical abilities test, and a one-year probationary period, initial term to expire July 31st, 2019. Then we'll do all the additional appointments. Any discussion?
Yes. You've already done the academy?
I did the call volunteer. Call of academy.
Excuse me?
I did the call volunteer, which is the same fire one and two, and then the full-time.
Okay. No further academy?
No, there would be a further academy required.
For?
Full-time, the full-time fire academy in Stowe would be required.
Okay, which is a number of months. Okay.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sorry for the long meeting.
Congratulations, don't trip.
Congratulations. Congratulations and welcome. All right, new business. This is to the Lakeville Board of Selectmen from the Historical Commission. So Monday, May 27th, is the Memorial Day Services at 10:30 a.m. at the Town Office Building and Fire Station. The parade will then move on to Dickren Duran Square and the Historic Townhouse, and they invite everyone to join them. So we have a poster that will be going out from the Historical Commission inviting you to the annual Memorial Day Observance, 10:30 a.m., and they would like to know if any of us will be joining them.
I will not.
What day of the week is the 27th?
It is Monday, May 27th, 2019.
I forget if I get off, well, I think I get off work.
So I guess if anyone is able to do so-
If I get off, I'm going.
We shall contact Nancy. I'm not sure if I can yet, or not. Okay, old business. So we have updates on the following items, the town hall redesign. So I know I saw Tim Graybars in there yesterday putting new-
And today.
And today, data lines in. Filing cabinets and counters will be delivered tomorrow, and the movers will move the desks and furniture on May 15th. Great. Community compact HR grant, almost complete.
Yep.
It almost caused Clarinda to spit out her water. We'll get an update on that one next time. The new police station, so the May 1st meeting is postponed until this Wednesday, so Nate said the construction's on schedule to meet the substantial completion date of June 4th. And we have nothing new on Route 79. Do we have any other business that may probably come before the meeting? No. Therefore, I will make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the new town administrator and the town administrator, and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board and the chair so declares as I do, and not return into open session.
Aye.
Aye.
Fabian?
Aye.
Houdley?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's done.